Okay, good evening. Today is Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, 6:30 PM. We have a new board secretary today in place of Brian, just temporarily. Welcome, Stephen. Can we have roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Lemiglio.
Here.
Mr. Grippo.
I'm here.
Dr. Hopkins.
Here.
Ms. Inesencio. Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. LaCorte.
Here.
Ms. Maris. Mr. Parker. Ms. Singh.
Here.
We have corps.
Thank you. Can we also have the Open Public Meeting Act, please?
Sure. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law, 1975, Chapter 231 Sunshine Law, copies of the public meeting notice were sent to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, the Star-Ledger, Franklin Reporter, Tap into Franklin Township, Franklin Township Clerk, Manager, District Schools, Offices and Associations, PTO Presidents, and posted on the district website.
Thank you. For the record, Mr. Parker will not be here for the meeting. Can I get a motion to move into confidential, please? Moved by Nancy. Can I get a second? Seconded by Dennis. All in favor? Perfect. So we're gonna adjourn to confidential for the purpose of discussing confidential matters, including athletic director and Franklin Park School principal interviews, personnel negotiations, and a worker's compensation settlement. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. We'll be back. Thank you. Hello. Good evening, everyone. It is still October 28th, Tuesday. We are a few minutes late because we were in confidential session for the purpose of discussing confidential matters, including athletic director and Franklin Park School principal interviews, personnel negotiations, and a worker's compensation settlement. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Erica, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? If you are all able to, please stand and join us.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nancy, can you please read the mission statement?
Yes.
The mission of the Franklin Township Public Schools, Franklin Township Public Schools embraces its diversity. What?
It has a potion to the mic.
Oh, like a, like a...
Like an ice cream cone.
Yeah. Okay. The mission of the Franklin Township Public Schools, Franklin Township Public Schools embraces its diversity, fosters excellent educational innovation, and empowers all students to achieve their highest potential.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda with addendum A? Moved by Nancy. Can I get a second? Seconded by Walter. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are on to our student representative report, which is going to be said by Dharthi Shastri.
Hi, my name is Dharthi Shastri, and I am one of the student government BOE liaisons. Here are some of the things going on at FHS. Firstly, the senior class held a successful homecoming dance on October 18th. Franklin High School Model UN hosted a successful FHS Model UN conference in conjunction with Rutgers IDIA also on October 18th. Freshman elections were a success. The class of 2029 is up and running. The student government will be holding its annual food drive for the Emmanuel Cancer Foundation. Non-perishable food items will be accepted and could be dropped off at the FHS office. Safe Halloween is on Friday, October 31st, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the FHS Events Lobby and Cafeteria. We invite all of our pre-K and elementary students and their families to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we are on to the student achievement presentation by Dr. Daniel Lawford.
You. Thank you, President Singh. Ah, thank you, Ms. Clark. Welcome, everyone, to our annual student achievement presentation. Thank you for being here. I'm going to, whoop, there we go. Thank you. Great report. I'm going to point the pointer at this screen, but if it's easier for you to see over there, that's fine. If you wanna kind of settle in, we have a number of slides to present. These are snapshots of how our students are doing at a moment in time. So are we gonna dim the lights a little bit more? All right. So we could see the slides. Thank you, Ms. Clark. All right. So welcome, everyone, again. So we want to keep in mind, these are snapshots in time. We continually use data to help guide our collective and individual decision-making in terms of student groupings and levels of rigor that we're providing for our students to maximize their learning opportunities. We're gonna begin with our ELA snapshot. And one thing we like to take a quick look at is, you know, an example of the different internal measures that we use. We're all familiar with IREDDI, which has five levels of student performance that is measured from K through 5. And here you can see, in English Language Arts, our kindergarten students from mid-year to end of year. Green is mid or above grade level, so about 18% of the time, we're in that. And then by end of kindergarten, that was doubled. And that pattern holds up. By the way, this presentation will be on the website, either later tonight or early tomorrow. So I'm gonna go kind of quickly, but you'll be able to read everything very carefully tonight or tomorrow as soon as we can get it up. So grade 1, grade 2, grade 3, grade 4, grade 5. In ELA, you see a similar pattern of increasing proficiency and reducing partial proficiency. In the state assessment, the NJSLA, we have five levels of performance. Exceeded expectations, met expectations are levels 4 and 5, and that's what you want. And so you can see here, it shows the 2024 performance and the 2025 at each of the levels, with the state on the top row and the district on the bottom row. So there's level 1, level 2, level 3. We want levels 4 and 5 for our students. So you can see here that in 2024, 38.5% of our students in grade 3 were at levels 4 or 5. But this year, we're 2% higher. So our students at grade 3 were at 40.5%. This is grade 4. And you see, we increased by a percentage point there. Grade 5 increased by a percentage point. And we love this slide. This is grade 6 ELA. This is nearly a 10-point increase, whereas the state increased by 3, we increased by 10. We love that one. This is grade 7, increased by 5 percentage points. This is grade 8, increased slightly. And then you can see here at grade 9, slight dip this year. We're taking a look at that to see if that's a curriculum issue or perhaps some professional development can help us move the needle there. These are, this is a summary of everything just presented. So there's a summary slide, and you can see, except for one grade level, which is slightly down, we had growth at all grade levels in ELA. This is a bar chart showing the same thing at each grade level. And here's a bar chart that shows our demographic racial subgroups. Here is a bar chart that shows special education, multilingual, and economically disadvantaged percentages for, again, levels 4 and 5. And so the overall result is that 44.5% of our students were in that level 4 or 5, and 22% were approaching. So approximately 2/3 of all of our students were at or approaching the grade level expectation. For a bit of context, we thought it would be helpful to provide this slide. One of our partners is Linkit, and Linkit works with more than 300 districts in the state of New Jersey. And what this plot diagram represents is the average of the past five NJSLA assessments, not including charter vocational schools. It's typical K-12 or K-5, depending on your district, schools. And this bottom, this bottom row from left to right represents the percentage of students who are eligible to receive free and reduced lunch. So from 0 on the left to 100% on the right. And this left vertical side, from 0 up to 100, represents performance on the NJSLA, average performance over those five years for those, for these levels. So our district in 2025, we were 52.6 free and reduced lunch eligible. We did achieve 44.5%, which is plenty of room to grow. We're clear-eyed about that. We are not satisfied with that number. But for context, we are above the mean, above the average for districts that are similar to ours in terms of free and reduced lunch. This is each grade level. So grade 3, past three years' performance. These are different kids, different years. There's grade 4, there's grade 5, grade 6, 7, 8, and 9. This chart actually shows same kids over time. So in 2223, 38% of our students were not proficient in ELA. Since that time, so in the current, you know, two years later, this current assessment, about 35% of our students who were in this zone were now in either of these two zones, the yellow or the green. Whereas 21.4% two years ago, we're approaching, almost half of those students are now in the proficient range. And the vast majority of students who were in the proficient range maintained that level of proficiency. So how do we do over the past three years? This was another improvement from the previous year. So 41.9, 42.2, 44.5. And you see the levels of not proficient have gone down as well. So what's next? We're gonna continue to take advantage of our familiarity with our new Benchmark K-5 Literacy Program. We're also doing different things with data and targeting our differentiation and giving PD around that. At the secondary level, we are learning more and more. Secondary literacy teachers tend to be less familiar with the science of reading and all that goes into reading than elementary-level teachers. But we're learning more about that because we're finding that those interventions help our middle school and even struggling high school students as well, plus all of these other strategies that you can read about when you look at this online. So for math, similarly, we use IREDDI. This is our kindergarten, oh, let's go back. This is our kindergarten in the middle of the year. There's kindergarten at end of year. So doubling the growth. And you can see, that's the pattern. And within the school year, there's grade 1, grade 2, grade 3, grade 4, and grade 5 in math. And at the state level, similar to ELA, we have five levels of performance. So you want to be on levels 4 and 5. So these are levels 1, 2, and 3. Here's 4 and 5. And this is for grade 3 mathematics. And you can see, from 2024 to 2025, our grade 3 students improved by 7 percentage points. And they're approaching close to the state average there. And in grade 4, we increased by about 5 percentage points. Again, are pretty much in line with the state average for grade 4. And we love this slide. This is grade 5, which improved about 11 percentage points and passed the state average so that our 5th graders are doing better than most 5th graders in the state of New Jersey. That was a big jump for us, and we're very proud of the changes that have happened in the math program, K-5. At grade 6, we had a 5 percentage increase. And grade 7, now, grade 7 and grade 8 have really wonky numbers because in grade 7, as you can see from this fine print here, this comes from the state, by the way. This is a standard slide that most school districts are presenting. Many students take the Algebra 1 or Geometry Assessment in grade 7 and grade 8. So it's not indicative of the entire grade level, these percentages. It's the students, you know, in 7th grade who are not yet taking algebra or geometry. So those are the percentages there from 24 to 25. A slight dip in grade 7. And similar with grade 8, which, again, isn't really grade 8. It's some of the students in grade 8. In Algebra 1, we had a slight increase from last year to this year. And that's students at all the different grade levels who take algebra, right? Whether you're, you know, high school or middle school. And geometry, we did have a dip. We are, we have been looking at this. So we went from 35.8 last year to 20 this year. While we have resolved staffing issues in our district across the board, including now for the math department, last year, we still had some lingering, you know, staff issues. So we had teachers covering a 6th class in the high school or a 7th class at the middle school who didn't have the same typical ability to do some team planning. And we are certain that this had an impact on our, on our performance last year. So that's no longer the case this year. We expect this year's performance numbers to be much higher. This is Algebra 2, where we saw a 9% increase from last year to this year. Here's the summary slide of all of those grades and all of those courses. Sorry, Malik, I'll do that. And here are the levels of change. So again, 6 out of the 9 courses, we saw positive change. There's 7 and 8, which is not indicative of the grade. And there's geometry, which is a concern. These are the bar graphs that represent what I just presented. Here are demographic racial subgroups. Here are special education, multilingual, and economically disadvantaged subgroups. And so overall, our math proficiency rate, this is levels 4 and 5, plus approaching, it's about 59, 60% of our students are either approaching or are proficient in the district. Here is a similar chart from the last one. Again, at 52.6% free and reduced lunch, the expected mean would be somewhere down here. We were at 30.7 above the mean, which, you know, again, just for context. For the past three years in math, these are, you know, grade 3, grade 4, grade 5. These are different kids, different years. But these are kids over time. So two years ago, that was our proficiency, our not proficient rate. And about 22% of these kids moved into these two zones. We had 27.2 in the approaching range. About 20% of them moved into proficient. And the vast majority, 67%, stayed in the proficient range from two years ago. So compared to previous years, this, we're up 3%. So we're up 3% from last year. Mathematics. And what are we going to do? Well, we want a grant that makes it easier for our teachers of math to access data and use it for small-group instruction. We also use many different tools for that purpose and provide PD to make sure that we're looking at all those areas where improvement is attainable. For 6 through 12, this is sort of all the rage across the country for a good reason. Building Thinking Classroom Strategies has been shown to make math very accessible and authentic, real-life math for our students. And our teachers are learning different strategies from that. I think groundbreaking book is safe to say. Also, different PD and various other strategies that you can read about there. In science, for the state assessment, we have four levels, not five. So levels 3 and 4 are the goal. You want proficient or advanced proficient in science. And this shows the levels 1, 2, 3, and 4 from last year to this year. At three, 3 grade levels take the science assessment, right? They take it in grade 5, they take it in grade 8, they take it in grade 11. So you can see, grade 5, from last year to this year, increased by 1.2%. Grade 8 had a dip. And grade 11 had a slight increase as well. So this is just breaking that out further. And this bar chart shows the same thing. Our district versus the state average. So, you know, we still have room to grow, for sure. And we're, we're working on that. These are our different demographic racial subgroups. Here are special education, multilingual, and economically disadvantaged subgroups. And so our percentage of proficient is at 17, and near proficient 36. So about 53% of our students are either proficient or near proficient. And we are definitely working on that. For context, again, going across at 52.6, we're not even near the mean. We're well above the mean. And you can see, science is certainly a challenge across the state with, you know, districts who have 0% free and reduced lunch achieving at about the 40% rate. But we are well above the mean in science. These are the three years in a row. So grade 5 has been growing the past three years, improving. Grade 8, as we said, took a dip this year. And grade 11 has also been improving the past three years. And those were different students, different tests, right? Different years. These are students, again, who stayed in the district for all three assessments. So two years ago, 38.9%. About 21% of them moved into these two areas. And 39.2%, about 16% of them moved into proficient. And 22% proficient, 71% stayed proficient. By the way, these numbers, like right here, you might wonder, why isn't that the same exact number? These are students who stayed in the district. So it only measures students who were here for all three assessments. So some students have come, some have gone. They're not in that count. So how has science done the past three years? This year is very similar to last year. Slight dip percentage-wise, but as we saw in those previous slides, grade 5 and grade 11 did better. Grade 8, the dip, you know, kind of contributed to us being slightly lower than last year in science. So using Title II funds for 5th-grade science PD is what we're doing to help them get a better sense of the assessment questions and the methodology to be most successful with those questions. Also reviewing student assessment data over the four years for trends, identify gaps, and make requisite curricular and instructional changes. Dynamic learning maps are used for students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. So students take this assessment, and it's engaged, it's sort of measured at emerging, approaching, at target, and advanced. So as you can see, we had 55 students take the math and ELA dynamic learning maps, and 16 students taking the science. And those are the levels of performance, advanced, at-target, approaching, and emerging. Dynamic learning maps, as well as the ABLLS and the AFLS, are used to help create individualized education programs and appropriate programs of study for students with the most cognitive need. Advanced placement results. We have talked about this. This has been a lingering issue in our district that we've had disproportionate enrollments in our AP. But over time, we've been doing better with that. So for example, at Franklin High School, approximately 12% of our students identify as Asian or Pacific Islander. But 27.6% of our students in AP courses are Asian or Pacific Islander. 32% of our students at Franklin High School identify as Black or African-American. And 25.4% of our students in AP are Black or African-American. Hispanic, 41.8. 26.3 in AP. And that's actually an improvement over the previous year. It's a less disproportional gap. So we pay attention to that. We also pay attention to outcomes on AP. A score of 3 is considered passing, but a score of 4 and 5 is really what you want if you're gonna have any hope of using some of that to transfer for credits in college. But our vast majority of our students are in that level 3, 4, and 5. And it's partly why we got one of those new banners as best high schools in the country because we have such a high percentage of students who take the AP, and we do well on our AP assessment. Can still do better. We still want to grow. And, you know, everybody has a 5. That's where we want to be. Another snapshot, not an academic one, but social, emotional learning, and culture-climate contributes to students belonging in school and their ability to be successful on these assessments. We collect data. We have asked all of you to take the NJSky survey, right? Our parents, our teachers, and our students take that survey. And we use that to program learning opportunities for our students to help with sense of physical safety, support of staff and student relationships, student sense of belonging, pro-social student interpersonal behaviors. So that's another snapshot. You can take a look at that a little more carefully on the presentation. We also think it's important, from time to time, to solicit feedback on our level of rigor. And for the past two school years, we've been engaged in a survey to the entire district. And then we met with a focus group of parents to review the data and see what the larger takeaways are for our schools and our school leaders. And we helped learn a lot. And we've made some changes this year to make sure we are appropriately rigorous in our classrooms. We also took great time to share how we place students in our enrichment and gifted and talented programs. We had some meetings across the district last year that were very helpful. And again, we're ever improving and evolving those programs as well. So as I said, this will be on the website soon. You can click on the links to learn more about these assessments. You can also click on links to be in touch with any content area supervisor. And there's my email on the right. If you have questions for me, click on that one and email me. But before we end the presentation, we are happy to make an announcement about something we've been working on. We had the opportunity to meet with some good friends over at SHI this summer. And we wondered if we could work on something significant with them. And they agreed to help guide us and work with our supervisors. And we, and I'll tell you more about this in a minute, are sort of in the midst of developing what we're going to call the Warrior Next Tech Academy, which is a school within a school, housed at the HSC campus, that will emphasize interdisciplinary connections, 21st-century learning skills, using immersive technologies and project-based digital learning with real-world connection through active business partnerships. So if you can imagine, 6th-grade cohort of students in September who are learning coding, they're learning about cybersecurity, they're learning about networking, they're learning how artificial intelligence works. We are going to be announcing this, well, we're announcing it tonight, but we're going to be communicating this with our teachers because we're gonna ask teachers who would like to be considered to teach in the academy, to be trained. And we expect to have more teachers than actually we'll be teaching in September. Get this training, which we think is gonna be a game changer for us because of some of the stuff we've been learning over our almost weekly meetings with our partners at, certainly, SHI, but Intel and Meta and Victory XR. There's so much that we can do in developing students within the academy, but it's actually can change the way that we teach and learn across the board. So we believe the exposure to what our kids will and our teachers will be exposed to in training for the academy, we think it's gonna have effects, really, for all students. in training for the academy, we think it's gonna have effects really for all students because teachers will get the training who aren't yet teaching in the academy at first. And the idea is over time to have a sixth grade, then a seventh grade, then an eighth grade cohort, and then on up into the high school where there's internship and career opportunities. And I'm sure we'll take some more questions about that in a minute. But I wanted to share that announcement with all of you. And at this time, I say thank you very much. And what questions Board of Education do you have?
Thank you, Dr. Loggern. So I'll start with my right. Erica, any questions? Lori?
I don't have any questions, thank you very much.
Bill?
So, uh, two things. One is tonight, we're gonna announce a couple of appointments. And if you wanna hear the comments of the Board of Education, what, till the end. In the past, people walk out and then the board speaks to an empty room. Just a statement. The second thing, Dan, forget the scores for a minute. What you announced at the end is an initiative that we did 30 years ago. We have magnet schools in Franklin Township. Anybody here remember the magnet schools? Okay. Uh, Dr. Clancy was the superintendent. He was a rough rider, I'll tell you that one. Uh, Dr. Rivali is very gentle compared to Clancy. But anyway, parents flocked to the school district because we had science and technology, the academy, the arts program. I, I was director of the magnet schools also in my role. And parents fought to get into various programs in Franklin Township. This is what we need in this community to stop the nonsense of people bad-mouthing our school. Because when we have this program, Dan, it will, a rising tide raises all ships. This, that's John F. Kennedy, by the way. You know who Kennedy is, right? Okay. Anyway, a rising tide raises all ships. This program will do that. So I don't have any questions. I congratulate you. I met SHI at the school board's conference. They were so excited with you and Dr. Rivali. Congratulations.
Thank you, Bill.
Nick?
I have nothing, thank you very much. Good job, Dan.
Walter?
Uh, no questions, great job, Dr. Loggern.
Nancy?
I don't have anybody. Great presentation and congratulations on the SHI.
Dennis?
But again, Dan, as always, good job. Use the microphone, yes? Can't hear me, Phil?
All right. But as always, great job and keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Loggern, no questions from me as well. Great presentation. We do have some work to do, but, you know, we'll keep moving forward. And with that, we are going to move on to the public hearing, which is done twice a year. And I'll invite Dr. Solomon now to do the Student Safety Data Systems annual report.
Good evening, everyone. And, uh, as mentioned, it's my turn to present, uh, tonight. Uh, as Artman mentioned, twice a year, we have to present our discipline data, if you will, the Student Safety Data System, um, sorry, our data on discipline. You might recall in June, I presented reporting period one, which was last school year, but that was from September to December. This report is for the entire year. All right, so it's the annual report for, for all of last year. Not only am I going to present some data, discipline data, I'm gonna also touch on harassment intimidation data. And I'm also going to talk about, uh, the elements of HIV and, and how we determine that. Then I'm gonna close with a little bit of digital citizenship, uh, public hearing I have to touch on as well as, uh, s- school safety drills. All right, so there's different components of this presentation. The bulk of it would be the data. Before I begin, you know, I'm, I'm really proud of what, uh, the data is, is exhibiting. Uh, you, uh, positive trends going in the right direction. There's always room for improvement. You know, one infraction is one too many. Uh, but I, I'm proud of the work from our teachers, our administrators, our paraprofessionals, our counselors, all that, all of us play a role, parents. We all play a role in help guiding our youngsters because we all at once need a guidance and we can't forget that. So with that said, let's jump right into it. Our goal is always to have, uh, support our, our, our positive behavior or, or help our students understand behavior impacts academic achievement. Um, we want to ensure that we support our students socially and emotionally through our PBS programs. And obviously, we wanna promote a safe learning environment so our students can learn and our teachers can teach. This is my favorite slide of the data because this is just perspective. Uh, the three pie charts there represents our elementary school, our middle schools, and our high school. The green section represents all of the students who have no discipline data at all, no infractions. The blue part of the pie are students with one infraction. And then the red slither represents students who have been suspended at least once. So I want you to turn your attention to the green and blue. Those are the students that represents no referrals or one referral. And if you do the quick math, you look at the elementary, 94 and some change with no referrals, 5% with, with one in elementary. If you look at that, that represents close to 99% of our students that fall in that range. That is above the PBS average where they're saying, and you'll see in the next slide, that their data says that students in that age range, K to six, or K to five, in our, in our situation, you're, they're, they, they have 90% that fall in between zero to one ODR. So we're, we're, we're trending in the right, we're, we're above the national average in terms of that. So I commend our, our elementary s- uh, schools and what they're doing. The same holds true for middle school and high school. We trend better than the national average. So that just shows you that we are, obviously by code status right here, we're doing the right things in terms of implementing the PBS model, implementing and so, all the counseling and supports interventions that we have to support our students. So I'm proud of that. And just again, to give a little bit more perspective, if you were wondering, there's over 3,700 PBS schools nationwide that represents 1.8 million students. So that's where that data comes from, all right? So the next slide is just from their, um, publication, PBS publication. This is where I got that information from. In terms of ODRs, and it's important just to give you everyone a quick lesson. ODR is just office discipline referrals. So if a student violates our code of conduct, we write a, a office discipline referral. So these are the os- office discipline referrals for the last two years. And again, as I mentioned, we continue to show a downward trend in the high school. And you'll see that's primarily because our class cuts are dropping tremendously. And that's been the trend over the last few years. The middle school made great strides last year of decreasing close to 300, yeah, 300 or so, um, office discipline referrals. Elementary is up a tick at 20 or so. The next few slides, we always point out, and this helps us identify what infractions are happening in the building. What's, what are some focus areas? And these are incidents. Incidents are not office discipline referrals. These are things that students do, all right? So, and it's important to know the difference because sometimes it can get confusing because two people could be involved with one incident. Okay? But you can see the trends from one year to the next. So in elementary, you know, I know that office disciplines is up a tick, but I know, I can see that physical aggression is an area to address, right? Um, everything else is basically the same. So this is what we do. This is what our principals look at, is what our prin- what's our, our vice principals, our administrators look at to see, all right, here are some trends, here are some areas that we have to focus on. Here are some areas our PBS team need to focus on, our safety team need to focus on. Here are the incidents for our two middle schools. And again, I'm expecting to see a downward trend because of the ODRs are down, right? And again, that's just good climate and culture in the middle schools that are exhibiting last, from, from last year. But again, same order of incidents, still the same areas to focus on. In the high school, same order of incidents. So these are the same areas we need to focus on. And as I mentioned with the high school, I know personally, just seeing the high school the last few years, the downward trend has been cutting class. Um, and that's due to the scheduling, that's due to just paying more attention to it and, and looking at different ways to address that. Everything else is basically the same. Disruption is up. And that's subjective sometimes. But with all incidents and all office dis- discipline referrals, when we see that, this is how we support our students under the PBS umbrella. We have mentoring. We have mentoring with, with community organizations, our counselors, our PBS. We have tier two, which is check-in and checkout to support our students, whether it's individually or as a group. We utilize restorative practices where we are meeting with students and families that are in conflict and, and having that tough discussion and, and walking them through the questions that we have to ask to help them move forward. And we're training our staff to build more capacity with that, with the help of Mr. Plumber and his team. Our school assistance coordinators provide support through counseling, whether it's groups or individual counseling or sup- or connecting with outside resources to support our students and our families. Then obviously, we have our school counselors and they're, they're providing their day-to-day support and also educating our, our staff and our students on social, emotional learning. Utilizing all of these interventions is just to name a few, is under our PBS model to support the data that was just shared with you. In terms of harassment, intimidation, bullying data, on the top is from the 20, it's, it's from the 23 to 24 school year. On the bottom's from the 24, 25 school year. And you can see the, the numbers of in, what's investigated. And hey, we, something was reported, we investigated. You can see that we decreased in investigations last year. However, the confirmed cases remain the same. And you never know how those things go. But I also can say I'm, I'm proud of our anti-bullying specialists or, 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 yeah, anti-bullying specialists where they are getting better at understanding what the investigation is telling them. And so you'll see about 25 to 30% um, confirmed rate at, at the bottom there. So with that, just a quick little, um, recap of what qualifies or what's the definition of HIV. And this is what our anti-bullying specialists, they have to review when they complete their investigation. And it's so important to know, these elements you see here, they all must exist to be, to say that, uh, an, an HIV investigation is founded. They all must exist, not just one, not just two, but all of them that you see here on the, on the screen. So harassment, intimidation, bully. HIV is any gesture written, verbal, or physical act that you have towards someone. All right? But it must be a perceived, perceived as being motivated by violating someone's protected class. Race, color, religion, ancestry, natural origin, gender, sexual orientation, identity, so on and so forth. You have to violate someone's protected class. It has to take place in school or outside of school. Really, it could be anywhere, I always say. But what's important is it must disrupt, substantially disrupt the school day. Okay? So all of those things that, those elements there, they must exist in order for us to say it's founded. If one is missing, it, it's bad behavior, but it may not be HIV. In addition to that, there's some secondary elements. And this is, this is just, just to make sure that we are looking at, uh, the definition clearly. It must meet at least one of these in addition to the, this previous slide where the person knowingly, um, caused physical, emotional harm. The person has, they've, uh, insulted or demeaned the victim. And also again, reiterates, it creates a hostile environment. It causes disruption. Okay, so we ask ourselves these questions. We review these questions very carefully because we wanna know if it meets the definition of HIV. This is important to note, obviously, we, we, we capture everything in hipster. And in hipsters is a platform that documents any investigation we do for HIV. So any, uh, first two violations of the HIV policy, uh, of course, we handle it through our code of conduct. But a third violation, uh, requires, uh, the student and the parent to participate in a course. That's a state law. This is basic information, but we have to continue to tell our students and our staff this because if we want to solve an issue or resolve an issue, you know, we need to let, pe- people need to inform the appropriate people, all right? So if you see something, say something, right? Whether it's you or a friend, see something, say something, all right? Same thing from, as a, of a parent, if you, your child is being bullied or you see someone being, being bullied, say something. We have the appropriate people to investigate, all right? Because if you don't tell anyone anything, we can't stop it, we can't do anything. There's frequently asked questions on our website. I encourage you to take a look at that. And that's, that's certainly there on our district website. As I mentioned, I just have to touch on internet safety. And just really quick, please note that we have an amazing IT department where they, uh, they have, uh, the ability to ensure a secure environment on all the devices we use. Uh, we, we, we assign student email accounts, so through our district server. So if you were to try to email a student, it won't go through, all right? We monitor what happens on our district devices. And the one thing that I'm really, uh, you know, uh, I'm gonna say proud of, but it's been a very valuable resource for us, is this line wise. Line wise is a filter on our devices, our, our student devices where not only it detects them from doing things that they are, are seeing websites that they shouldn't see, but it also monitor what they type in. And I, I found this so supportive in our mental health efforts, in, in mental wellness efforts, um, to support our students because so often we find information from students who are going through, uh, some tough times. And this helps us be proactive and support them, um, right, right at moment's notice. There's been times at night we will have to call the police department, this, do a wellness check. Or, you know, make an appointment through, uh, with the psychiatrist, uh, psychi- psychologist, PES. And LineWise helps us, um, get ahead of that. So I'm appreciative of this. It's, it, it comes up a lot because it's very sensitive sometimes and some things are not as high level, but when they do, when they are high level, um, i- it's certainly, um, I'm proud of the, the efforts and the supports that we have in place to support our students. Um, our school districts, uh, excuse me, all of our schools in the district have been doing grade level assemblies, reviewing these, uh, internet safety protections that we have. Um, and that's something we'll continue to do to review it. Alright? Last but not least, this is, you'll see this around our schools. Um, these are, we follow the standard response protocol. And these are the different types of drills we have in our schools. So if you're visiting, you might hear us say shelter in place hold or shelter in place secure. And that is used for oftentimes when we're assessing a situation or sometimes secure, you see up there, we want someone to come that is outside in the building, okay? Lockdown, those are drills to, when you have an active shooter drill or something like that, we utilize a lockdown drill. Evacuate fire drill. Um, you see the shelter hazard, again, we had an earthquake, remember, two years ago almost? We had a shelter in place, right? We had to figure out what's going on, so. That's the standard response protocol that we utilize. And we use these drills to support these particular situations. Right, so, um, these are common things, you see common things that we, we actually do with the. Alright? And I believe that closes my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Very valuable presentation. Before we open the floor for the public, um, I will start from my left this time. Nick, any questions?
I have nothing. Thank you, Nick. Great job.
Thank you.
Walter?
Uh, no questions. Great job, Nick.
Nancy?
Good job, Nick.
Questions?
Dennis?
None for me.
Erica? Lori?
Thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you.
Bill?
Nick, this was a fantastic, uh, presentation. Uh, the tracking of the, uh, not the hips, but the beha- but behavior is such a difficult, as you know. The tracking of, uh, behavior improvement that don't actually hit the hips, but hit the detentions and suspensions. Is there something in place for that?
Yeah, I mean, we track all of our discipline data. If I'm understanding your question correctly, those that are not hips, if it's bad behavior, whether it's a suspension, um, whether it's in-school support, uh, whether it's detention, we track all of our discipline data through our student information system called Genesis.
Right, the ODRs.
Yes.
Right, the ODRs lead to hips eventually if they, they get out of control.
It could.
So, what do you, what do you say about the ODRs? Is there some program? Are we looking at diminishing?
Yeah, I mean, we, we utilize a program PBS, right? That's our umbrella of programs. We have different interventions as I touched on, whether it's mentoring support, uh, whether it's, uh, counseling support, whether it's our restorative, we have, that's a huge thing that's happening now that we are growing and getting, getting better at. Uh, we still need to grow in that area, uh, um, and, and, and continue to grow in social emotional learning. Because bad behavior, um, there's so many different ways to support a student, not just through punitive manners. There's different ways to support a student to help them learn from their mistakes. So we have a lot of different programs in place. And, um, and I'm appreciative of the efforts that, you know, of our staff, um, in, in, you know, implementing those, those interventions.
Th- thank you very much.
You are.
Thank you, Nick. Um, I will entertain a motion to open for public comments, three minutes per speaker only on the SSDS report. Moved by Nancy. Can I get a second? Seconded by Walter. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, comments from the public is now open. If you would like to ask any questions from Dr. Solomon, only on the SSDS report, please come up to the mic. State your name and address and ask away your question. Three minutes only.
Seeing no public question, Madam President, I move the close to public session.
Second.
Okay, motion to close by Bill, seconded by Erica. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have our board secretary. You can please do roll call for A1 SSDS and HIB report, please.
Mr. Demeglio?
Yes.
Mr. Grippo?
Yes.
Dr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Inesencio?
Yes.
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 Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Ms. Singh?
Yes.
Thank you. So motion carries and we are on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you. Uh, I'll keep it brief because there were s- two excellent presentations. First, I want to take another opportunity to thank Dr. Lagren and his team for providing such a comprehensive data report this evening. As reported by Dr. Lagren, there are some areas that we've shown some good growth in. And there are others that we haven't shown the type of growth that we would like. With that said, we'll continue to push forward and work alongside our talented teachers as they work to help and encourage our students make strides along that learning continuum. And I just want to acknowledge, we have some supervisors that are here with us tonight. Uh, we have some that had to leave, but they were here earlier. So if you could just wave and raise your hand, supervisors, I want to thank you for all of your hard work and I know your level of commitment is second to none and we're going to keep at it. So, good job. SSDS report, I also want to thank Dr. Solomon for the work he and his team did to bring us such a comprehensive report on both our discipline data and HIB data from the previous school year. So that was twenty-four, twenty-five. It's nice to see that we are trending in the right direction, as Mr. Grippo had stated. I encourage all to keep up the good work so that we may enjoy an even more successful school year this year and in years to come. So, and I know we have some principals here, uh, you guys want to wave and, um, I want to thank you for your efforts. And let's continue down that positive track. I just want to remind everybody, and I'll end with this, that the twenty-twenty-five end of daylight savings time is this weekend. So on Sunday, you're going to be changing your clock. Sometimes that has created some confusion with the arrival of school. Um, so please make sure you change that clock on Monday, uh, on Sunday rather, so that on Monday, you're on time for your bus, you're on time for school. So Sunday night, end of daylight savings times. Remember, we fall back. Right? So fall back, turn that clock back, and just make sure you're on time for school on Monday. That's it for us. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll also keep my board president's report short. Um, I know we have a few Franklin Park staff here as well, and I will start with a moment of silence. Earlier this month, we learned of the passing of Julie Rivera, a beloved preschool teacher at Franklin Park School. Since joining our district in twenty-twenty-one, Ms. Rivera's dedication to her students was unwavering. According to her former principal, Ms. Rivera created a warm, nurturing, and joyful environment where every child felt safe and encouraged to learn and grow. Our deepest condolences are with her family, friends, and all those whose lives she touched. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We also keep the people of Jamaica, Cuba, and the Bahamas and other areas which are in the path of Hurricane Melissa in our thoughts and prayers this evening as well. Let's move to Franklin High School students' give back. From our Fine Visual Performing and Practical Arts Department, Ms. Fenula McNeil's students combined creativity and compassion by selling their handmade ceramic bowls during back-to-school night, raising an impressive five hundred and twenty-five dollars for Franklin Food Bank. Each student created two bowls, one to keep and one to donate for the sale. This meaningful project allowed students to express themselves artistically while supporting a cause close to home. As our student representative mentioned, I'll reiterate, Franklin High School is again hosting Safe Halloween on October thirty-first from four PM to six PM in the events lobby and cafeteria of the high school. Families with young children are invited to check out the activities our FHS warriors have put together for the event. Since this meeting has been long and we have some great things to also cover, I am going to waive the committee reports. And I'm hoping that the board members have read the committee reports, and I would encourage all of you to go on the website and read the committee reports. So in our strategic plan committee, I would like to say that we met this month and viewed a presentation highlighting some of the recent progress towards the plan's goals. We invite you to check that out on the presentation which is posted in the About Us District Plan section of the district website later this week. And that ends my president's report. Now I will again entertain a motion for comments from the public to open for comments from the public, five minutes per speaker on agenda items only. Any of the agenda items that are on the report today. Moved by Dennis. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Nick. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, comments from the public are now open. Five minutes per speaker, agenda items only. Once again, if you have a comment, come to the mic, state your name, address, and please share your comment or question that you may have for the board.
Seeing no comments, Madam President, I move the close to public session.
Motion to close by Bill. Bill, you don't even give people a chance to get up their chair.
If they want to talk, they'll jump up, believe me.
Motion to close by Bill. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lori. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so since we've moved from committee and liaison reports, do the board members have any questions on the committee reports? I'll start with you, Nick. Any questions on any committee reports?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Walter?
Uh, no questions.
Nancy? Dennis?
Good.
Erica?
Oh, no, no question. Thank you.
Lori?
No questions. Thank you.
Bill? Thank you. Okay, we're on to new business. Mr. Vice President.
Alright, I make a motion to move R1 monthly reports. M, M1, minutes of the board meetings. A1, travel and we've A2, I'm sorry. A2, travel and related expense reimbursement. A3, report of non-public acceleratory and handicap services. A4, school nursing services plan. A5, NJ SLEDs annual state submission. A6, American Education Week, November seventeenth through twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. A7, National School Bus Safety Week, October twentieth through the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. A8, education support personnel recognition. A7, memorandum of agreement. A10, semi-action plan. A11, donation. A12, revision policy, second reading, and adoptions. A13, revised bylaws, second reading. A14, revised policy, first reading. A15, new policy, first reading. A16, facility use. A17, placement of recycling clothing bins. A18, submission of NJ CUSAC Statement of Assurance and District Performance Review for twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six. A17, chronic absentee's corrective action plan. A20, school bus emergency exit drill report. B1, warrants and payrolls. B2, financial report. B3, contract approval. A4, change orders. B5, facility report. B6, award of RFP number twenty-twenty-six dash twenty-one. B7, disposal of equipment, food services. B8, budget goes and calendar twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven. C1, out of district students twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. C2, field trip destinations. C3, field trip applications. C4, acceptance of the reading intervention for secondary engagement grant. C5, new textbooks. C6, aviation club flyover at homecoming football game. A7, new course and curriculum. S- C8, Seton Hall University student social emotional learning study. P1, workers' compensation. P2, FTSSA successor agreement. P3, personnel report number four. And that's it, Madam Pa- President.
So there's a motion to approve R1, M1, A2 through A20, B1 to B8, C1 to C8, P1 to P3 with addendum A. Can I get a second? Seconded by Nancy. Can we get roll call, please?
Mr. Demeglio?
Yes.
Mr. Grippo?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Inesencio?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. LaCorte?
Yes.
Ms. Maris? Ms. Singh?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. So we have two important announcements to make. We have our new principal.
Not yet. We didn't vote on that. We didn't vote on the.
We just did. We included a denim make. Yes, yep. We got you.
So we're gonna announce our new principal for Franklin Park School. Where is she? There she is. There she is. Okay, Ms. Angela, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Ravalli, and members of the Franklin Township community. I'm deeply honored and truly grateful for the opportunity to serve as the next principal of Franklin Park School. Thank you for entrusting me with this incredible responsibility and for your continued commitment to our students, staff, and families. For the past thirteen years, I have proudly called Franklin Township my home. I began my career as an ESL teacher at Pine Grove Manor, a close-knit family-like school that celebrates our multilingual learners and their rich cultural and linguistic assets. Today, I have the privilege of serving as the vice principal of Claremont Elementary School, our district, district's largest elementary school, and a vibrant reflection of the diversity and excellence that makes this community so special. I want to express my deepest gratitude to my current principal, Mr. Rivera, who has been a decade-long mentor, my greatest champion, and a guiding force who has consistently pushed me to grow into my full potential. Your leadership and belief in me have shaped the educator and leader I am today, and I will remain eternally grateful. As I step into this new role, I do so with a deep As I step into this new role, I do so with a deep sense of humility and purpose. Franklin Township is where I began my career, where my heart is rooted, and where I intend to stay. I look forward to discovering the heartbeat of Franklin Park School, learning what makes it distinctive, honoring its traditions, and working together to continue strengthening the sense of unity, pride, and purpose that Ms. Stein paved the way for. Thank you again to the board, to Dr. Ravalli, and the entire Franklin Township community for this tremendous honor. I'm excited to begin this next chapter in partnership with our outstanding educators, families, and most importantly, our students. Thank you.
And while she's finishing shaking her hand, we have our second announcement. We welcome our very own Mr. Anthony Britto as the new athletic director. Well, I have to say that, in a suit.
I'm gonna make a little shorts, I can put my shorts back on. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank Dr. Ravalli, the Administrative Cabinet, and the Board of Ed for this incredible opportunity to serve as District Athletic Director. I would also like to thank my wonderful family, they've always had my back for everything I've ever done. This is my 27th year here in Franklin, I'm truly honored to be, to be, to trust you've placed in me and grateful for the chance to continue supporting our students, coaches, and community in this role. Athletics has always been about more wins than losses. To me, it's about teamwork, perseverance, and character. My goal is to help every student athlete grow not only in their sport, but as individuals who represent our school with pride and integrity. I want to thank the staff, coaches, who've encouraged me, believed in me, and most importantly, trusted me. Their dedication inspires me every day. I look forward to working closely with them, strengthening our programs, and provide the best possible experience for all our students. Thank you again for this opportunity. I'm excited for what lies ahead and committed to building on the strong foundation we already have. Thank you.
Okay, the party's not over yet, so we're open for, I'm entertaining a motion to open for public comments, so on any topic, so everyone can come and congratulate our two appointees. Five minutes per speaker, any topic. So moved by Nancy. Seconded by, seconded by Walter, all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. That was perfect timing.
That was, I tried to jump, but it didn't work out, so. Good evening, Wendy Riga, One Markham Road, Somerset, New Jersey. I just want to say congratulations to both of our, to our new principal of Franklin Park School, and also to Mr. Britto. Mr. Britto, all of the kids and the parents respect you. They trust you. And I think that, for me, I'm really looking forward to a lot of positive change, and I know you're gonna do it. Also here on behalf of the President Council, you are a much-welcome face, so I'm happy to hear that you intend to stay at Franklin Park School. The parents there will be very happy to hear that. And I think that was it. Mr. Dr. Solomon, I have a question for you, but I'm gonna leave it off record because it's not that important, so, but I just want to let you know. Thank you so much.
Anybody else?
My name is Robert Wazikowski, I live at 28 Hill Avenue in Somerset, New Jersey. I just want to say congratulations to the new positions for those people, that's awesome. But I have a different topic that I want to talk about. I just realized that in 2024, 2025, I did not get the reimbursement for my kids going to private Catholic school. And I called up the Board of Transportation to ask if I could get reimbursement. And they said I missed the deadline. And I said, you know, I filled out this form for five years previously. Could you tell me how this happened? And she's like, well, possibly could have got lost in the mail. She's like, but our mail gets delivered to a different building and then gets transferred to their building. And then it sits there for several months, and then they open it. And she's like, it's very possible we misplaced it or discarded it. So, I was like, so now that's my fault. You know, so I was hoping that you guys could look into that situation and possibly get me my reimbursement for 2024, 2025. Because I did a little Google search, and only 1% of the mail gets lost. And I mean, I live in Somerset, and it's going to Somerset, I can't imagine the post office would mess that up. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leslie Charette, 32 Rooshagall, Somerset Township. I have two children that are currently in Franklin High School, a ninth grader and a senior. I was disturbed a little bit to see the NJ SLA scores for science for my children. They are both AP students, very talented kids. And when I questioned them regarding those tests, they said, both of them said, in different scenarios, that they were tested on material that they had not learned during that period of time. So my question is, we're showing these scores, and I know that some of them are positive. We have a lot of work to do in the district. But what is the justification for testing children in areas of things that they have not learned? Because the scores are always gonna be skewed if we're testing our children in subject matters that they have not learned. And it's always gonna reflect negatively on those scores overall.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, motion to close by Dennis. Can I get a second? Seconded by Erica, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So we have to respond to two parents? John, would you like to take those?
Sure. With regard to what we call Aiden Lou, the parent who came up to talk about reimbursement, that's called an Aiden Lou payment. There is an application, there is a deadline, all of those kinds of things. I'm not certain what happened to your application, but I can certainly ask the business administrator to look into that. He works directly with the transportation department, so if that gentleman is still here at the, you know, if you could perhaps provide your name, if you haven't already done so, we certainly will have both the assistant superintendent for business and the business administrator look into the status of your application and what may have occurred. To the young lady who was at the microphone, that is something we certainly do look at. That's called the tested curriculum, right? So you have the taught curriculum versus the tested curriculum. They don't always align perfectly. And at times, what happens is the test is changed, and therefore, the curriculum needs to be changed. That is the job of our supervisors. I'm not so certain exactly what happened with your children and/or what course it was, what test it was. If it was an AP course, oftentimes, that can happen as well, because that's very much the same. The test changed, and the curriculum has to do the same. So I would charge Dr. Logren, who gave that wonderful presentation, to look into that. And perhaps, right after the meeting, you can give him a little more of the specifics, and he will work with our science supervisor, and we'll get to the bottom of that. But that is something, that is a phenom in our world, in all of education, where we are constantly looking at that, right? There are three pieces, if I may take this opportunity, I know it's late, but there are three pieces to curriculum in general. There's a written curriculum. That's the guide. Ours lives on a, in a living, breathing format in a computer program. And we're constantly looking at that. That's what's written, that's the objectives, those kinds of things. Then there's what teachers actually teach that can sometimes be out of alignment with what is written, right? So that's the job of the supervisors and the principals and the vice principals to go in and assure that what is being taught is what is written. And then there's also that part that's being tested, right? The specific objectives, we call that the tested curriculum. And those three have to be somewhat in alignment, and when there's a disconnect in any of those three parts, that's for us to work on. The good thing about those tests oftentimes is they do give you what's called an item analysis, and that's something that our folks, and they're shaking their heads, they're looking at constantly. Because when those tests change, they give us an item analysis to tell us in our district where our students might most be struggling and what kind of items they're struggling most with. And then we can go back and look at what's written and also analyze what's tested or what's taught in those classrooms to find out where there may be the deficiency, which is how we get the movement, how we get that little bit of growth that we're seeing. It's difficult to get growth, but, you know, we are being successful in getting it. Do we want more? 110%. I agree with you, and we need more. But we're not gonna go anywhere if we don't have somewhat of an alignment between those three definitions of curriculum. So we'll get on it, I promise you, and we'll get a little bit more into the detail about your particular issue, because it could be helpful for a lot of people. So thank you.
Thank you. Now, lessons are good. And now we're on to the last part of our meeting, which is good of the order. And I will start with you, Ms. Erica.
Good evening. I just want to extend my congratulations to Ms. Pape and Mr. Britto. All the best, yep. And I also want to wish our students a very safe and fun Halloween. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Lori?
I also would like to congratulate Ms. Pape and Mr. Britto on their new positions. We're looking forward to wonderful things from both of you. And their best is yet to come, I'm confident. Thank you very much.
Bill?
So I'll start with the two appointees. As we said in the interviews earlier, it is so important, the charisma and the gifts that you bring to this position. Angela and Anthony. The athletic program has so much potential in Franklin Township. What a great challenge for you, Mr. Britto, to make us the best in the state. And Angela, you have so much enthusiasm. I feel sorry for Mr. Rivera. He's gonna have to do all the work now. Have to bring Fico back to help him, anyway. Angela, congratulations, you're gonna do great. But I also want to make a point that Tuesday is Election Day. I'm not gonna mention any names. But it's absolutely essential that you vote for the right Board of Education people. This is a critical election on Tuesday for our students and for the state of New Jersey. And we have got to get the vote out at every level in this community. We have some exemplar candidates running for the Board of Ed. If you want to know who they are, go to my Facebook page. If you're not a friend of mine, something's wrong, so you should go to the Facebook page, Bill Grippo. And make sure you bring someone to the polls. I'm not kidding now. I've done a lot of elections in Franklin over 50 years. I was deputy mayor, I know the business. This one's a game changer. This one's a game changer for our school system. So I am imploring you to take this seriously. I'm not joking around. Usually I kid around, I'm dead serious. You gotta make some phone calls, and you gotta get it done. Thank you.
Nick?
Okay, I have a question for Steve first, if that's okay? On those bins that we approved that we have in each of the buildings, I just want to ensure that that money, when that comes in, that goes to parent-based organizations? Clothing bins?
Yes, I think those are being run actually by the PTOs now. There was some discussion about how the flow of money was gonna happen there. And it was thought it's best to keep it off of the district's books and have the PTO actually engage, you know, a vendor to manage that with them.
So those go right to the organization? Okay, yeah, I forgot to bring that up.
Yeah, we just have to recognize it, because there's a permit fee that we didn't realize. There is a permit, I don't know about a fee, but we have to apply where each of those bins are, we have to apply to the council. So we're taking the formal motion in order to be able to get the permits to allow the folks to have the bins on the campuses. I didn't recognize that. We didn't know that there was a permit in the township necessary, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that those funds don't run through the school and then out to the PT.
Yeah.
And congratulations to Angela and Anthony. I just want to repeat one comment I made in executive about Angela. Last year, when we had the Teacher of the Year Awards, and she came up because Miguel was homesick. She did a phenomenal job, and I said, that woman's gonna be a principal very soon. I didn't realize it was gonna happen this soon, but okay. And Miguel, you're gonna have to start all over now. You know, it is what it is. Anthony, congratulations to you. I hear a lot of good chatter out on the street from parents, teachers, and students. You're gonna do a great job there. Again, I want to remind everyone to get out and vote. Kudos to Ms. Miles and Jason over at the high school for the homecoming event and the flyover, which was phenomenal. Unfortunately, Mr. Grippo couldn't see it because it was too far up. And the start of the 20-year celebration for the Franklin High School building. And I also want to give a kudos to Tim Lewis from the grounds department. Project Graduation was given this beautiful trailer where we keep clothes for the clothing drive. And we needed shelves in it. They delivered the shelves to the high school, not knowing who was gonna put them up. And I get a text message from Tim with a picture of the shelves that were all put up in the- with a picture of the shelves that were all put up in the storage facility. So I wanted to just give him a public kudos, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Walter?
Short and sweet for me tonight. Angela and Mr. Britto, congratulations. It is very apparent that you have a lot of support from everybody who came out tonight. And of course, that support won't stop here, so definitely know that you can continue to follow us for anything that you need. Ditto what Mr. Britto said. Definitely make sure you guys get out and utilize your voice in the vote on Tuesday. And kids, be safe next week for Halloween.
This week.
Oh, this, oh, this week. I gotta get my candy. This week, this week, this week. Thank you.
Nancy?
Okay, so mine's a little bit longer, and I wrote it down, yay. So when I first ran for the Board of Education, it wasn't part of some long-term plan. Someone asked me, and I said, "Why not?" Honestly, I never expected to win, which goes to show, be careful what you wish for. I'll never forget Evan's first graduation, my youngest son. He had finished early, gone to boot camp, came home three days early before graduation, and he wasn't planning to walk. I told him, "I've invested 14 years in your education. You're gonna walk or you're gonna crawl." He walked, and he enjoyed it. That moment reminded me that education is about pride and milestones, not just academics. When I first ran, I had two priorities: televised board meetings and an independent audit. That was 2006. It took a year, but we got those meetings televised, and now they're on YouTube. So if you have trouble sleeping, you know where to find them. And the audit, it taught me that we have checks and balances in place and that they're working. Board members don't just get elected and wing it. We take mandatory training and annual updates. I've had more homework as an adult than I ever did in high school. Like Artiman, I became a certified board leader, not just for the title, but to serve well. And just last week, we returned from the Jersey School Boards Conference, connecting with other districts and learning what's working across the state. Let me confess, believe it or not, I hate public speaking, but I talk a lot. I don't know if you noticed that. Sometimes leadership means finding your voice, even when you'd rather stay quiet. One year of board service includes monthly meetings, committees, training, and prep. That's a minimum of 75 hours, and that's just the structured time. It's far more when you include emails, emergencies, and the emotional toll. It wasn't glamorous. It wasn't simple. It wasn't service, and I showed up. No pension, no health insurance, just a belief in public education. So what do we get? We get paid in moments, when a student's eyes light up, when a teacher is practically doing cartwheels presenting curriculum, when you hand a child their diploma. And for me, it was a privilege to hand at least one of my kids their diploma. These moments remind us of why we serve. I was going through a tour recently and found a few pins I hadn't seen in a long time. One of them was from when I completed my new board member training, given to me by Evanage. Another was from Somerset County School Boards Association. I don't remember the occasion, but I remember the feeling. They were tucked in the same place as my Presidential Gold Award for Volunteerism, which I remember but hadn't seen in a while. And then there's my Warrior for Life pin. That one I see all the time. Bill and I are very proud members, and that pin isn't just a keepsake. It's who I am. Each of these pins means something to me. They're quiet reminders of the work, the values, and the moments that shape this journey. Once you're elected, you're always a board member, whether you're in this room or at ShopRite. But no individual board member can commit the board to anything. The board speaks with one voice, not nine. This board is not about politics. It's about children, fairness, and access to quality education. I kept running because people asked me to, because I was proud, and because, believe it or not, I was having fun. Walter and Artiman and I are like Seinfeld, stepping away when the work is still strong. We'd rather end at our peak than overstay our welcome. As I step down, I'm proud to see leadership continuing in familiar hands. Angela, who served as the VP at Claremont, will now lead Franklin Park School as its new principal. She brings deep knowledge of students and a steady compassionate presence that will serve our community well. And Anthony, who has been a dedicated assistant AD, now steps into the lead role. His energy, commitment, and understanding of our students' needs, both on the field and beyond, makes him the right person at the right time. Their promotions remind us that legacy isn't about just looking back. It's about building, it's about building forward. When you walk into the room, you leave your ego at the door. Board service is about stewardship, vision, and keeping our students at the center. In other words, it's about learning to play well in the sandbox. Because if you can do that, you can serve well. And that's a legacy that I hope to leave behind. The reason I bring this up is, number one, we just promoted two Franklin people who have been with us since the beginning of their careers, which is really important. And the other thing is, like we're saying, Tuesday is Election Day. And this is really what it's all about, and this is why we do what we do. So I think it's important to revisit what we're doing and why we're doing it and what you get out of it because it actually is a lot. And that ends my board member comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. You said a lot of things that probably resonate with a lot of us. And now we're on to Dennis.
All right. Angela, Anthony, congratulations. You guys did a outstanding job doing your interviews with us. And remember the challenge. Challenge. Because we will be watching. And, but I'm sure that you will be successful in building good leaders within our students and good citizens as they progress up. And just like everybody, a couple of my of the members said here, be safe out there for Halloween. Be careful, be safe. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. So I can't stop congratulating the two of you. And I know it time stands between my comments and my closing comments and all of you, so I'll be very short. And here's my message in closing. Contemplate seriously how your job serves others. Often, the least glamorous tasks are service-oriented at their core. Consider those tasks as such. Do you quietly take on tasks that prevent other stress? If you catch errors before they become fire drills, handle tedious compliance paperwork so nobody gets fined, or track down missing information you are serving others? Do you make complexity feel simple for your colleagues? When you disentangle data and present findings in a clear report, you provide a huge act of service for others who depend on that data for success. This is for you, my two doctors here who presented. Do you make a product that improves lives? This doesn't have to be something life-saving by any means, just something that makes a bit of a difference in someone's day. And finally, even more simply, as a leader, and I see so many of you in this room today, do you provide well-paid jobs for your employees so that they can raise their families comfortably? We're gonna lose SNAP benefits come November 1st. So think about, you know, helping someone here. To make this tangible, I really recommend each one of you writing your reflections down. Keep that note in the inside of your drawer or your desk or in a different spot where you'll see it every day. Make a difference, and I know each and every one of you at Franklin do make a difference to either one of our kids or to one of your peers. And as a lot of people said here, go cast your vote, whether it's early vote or on Tuesday. Each one, each vote makes a huge difference. Go Franklin. Thank you.